Hello, how are you? Oh, Howard, how are you?
How are you doing?
Good. I seen you too. I'm gonna have to start burning water with me.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, a little bit. Johnson.
They'll now be arrested for what, Henrys and Margie?
Oh, did they?
I see where the Tilters closing.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I guess after forty years they decided to hang it up.
Yeah, I went to college. Mike and Mark. Forget their names now. All right.
Never been in that place.
Oh, no?
No.
We used to have, uh, they grew back.
Oh, okay.
And we had Atlantic County Football League meetings there.
Okay.
Every, during the season every week.
Oh, wow.
And that was always fun. I think they still do it. But it's actually not the same as originally.
It's all messed up.
Right, Janice, where are you?
I really struggled the whole time. Well, Mr. Smith, how are you?
Never do. Never do.
Very much money.
The state can save. If they just stopped this shit and put it off. They want to publish it. And it's getting expensive to print stuff anymore. All that color and paper.
No, we didn't.
Right.
And then we decided
Glad everyone's okay.
To share as superintendent.
Oh, okay.
So we did for two years.
That's a lot of songs.
Nah. Actually, Limwood suffered.
Part of it, I mean.
Because he was a pain in the more than he was Limwood.
I mean, I used to do this on my second, too. I mean, I was the deputy there.
But what happened is we figured out we're gonna save around sixty-seven thousand.
You know, so.
Just Limwood's money. And, you know, do all this. You figure we're gonna save sixty thousand, three million away from us in a scalpel. That's when I realized this shared service shit is all bullshit. You don't get any credit for it anywhere.
No, you don't get a credit back from anybody. And it's hard because you're doing, doing that, there's always one focus for it and another. So do you, are you?
I even met with the assistant director. I did too much. Really? I said, every year we do this, the city has a different safe practice. Fill out all these forms and you get credit for a little shit. And they can get mad at you for the other.
Right.
Well, you know, it'd be very easy at that point, say, share service, how many? You get a point three or whatever, and now you get some credit. And maybe you don't get your.
You don't.
It's very experimental. It looks like, uh, very convenient. Yeah, because it wasn't right in your purse.
I mean, mainly all the, there's still the debt.
Yeah.
So the ordinance that we have to amend for the, uh, we do that. When do you do that?
I'm Stanis.
She was in hospital for days. And it was all bad. It's a, blame me. I'm just still, I've been talking all day, of course. But it's all good.
I'll make it work. There you go. Hey, try it. And you do sound better though.
Ordinance, so, okay, got it.
I got my green top.
Yes.
Yeah. Looks like we got the Irish thing going on here. Three across, like tic-tac-toe. Yeah. Mr. Nick Wiggs, nice tie. Ready? Kesnick.
We'll split the, uh.
You remember them. You gotta remember Claire.
No, I don't.
You don't remember?
This meeting is called to order. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute? And if we could please have a moment of silence for George and Claire Kesnick. Uh, Claire served on city council and was the first woman to serve as city council president. And George was one of the original founders of the Summers Point Sharks and also served as Summers Point Court Clerk. They were married for seventy years and died twenty-one hours apart. Please have a moment of silence.
Let's lift the flag in the United States of America. I'm very liberal, which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Havocorn?
Present.
Councilmember Owen?
Here.
Councilmember DeTampelis?
Here.
Councilmember McCary?
Here.
Councilmember McGuigan?
Here.
Councilmember Dill?
Here.
Council President Johnston?
Here.
Here. Also present is Mayor Cap, Administrator Frost, confidential assistant to the city clerk Canucio, city solicitor Smith, and city engineer, uh, Paul. Cates. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summerspointgov.org. Oh, good, okay, okay, great, thank you. Does anyone have any communications to offer?
Hearing none.
Hearing none? Uh, Mr. Mayor.
I have just a few things. Number one, I don't want anyone to think that just because I became mayor and you didn't see me all in February, that, don't laugh. That I was just, uh, acting mayoral. Uh, fact of the matter is, at the beginning of February, caught COVID, my wife and I, two weeks later, my wife and I got influenza A. I didn't know there was a B and all the rest. And then about a week later, my wife came down with pneumonia and spent four days in the hospital at Shore Medical. I cannot thank Shore Medical enough for taking great care of my wife. We were in Massachusetts when the flu and the pneumonia hit because when my three-year-old grandson says, "Pop, pop, let's snuggle, we wanna watch Spidey and Friends", of course you say yes. And then you get the flu. Uh, but drove her home, got her to the hospital here, they take great care. We have, I am so grateful for the care that she got. Having a hospital in our backyard is such a benefit. Uh, and it makes it so much easier, and I think that it's a, we overlook that at times, but, but I don't. And I want to thank Shore Medical and everyone there. That was number one. Number two, if anyone hasn't noticed, the phones are working. So we had a phone situation there. I want to thank Jason. You know, I'd love to take credit for it, it was on my watch, but I really can't. Uh, but at the end of the day, the phones are working, and that's fabulous right there. Day Fest is coming up. Uh, it's April twenty-seventh. Uh, our very own Steve Hornick, who's hiding in the back over there, he is the chairman. If anybody wants to volunteer to help, you know, we can use some help on the day of. We got a great committee, but if we can use a little bit of help on the day of for a few hours in the morning. Uh, I'll give you my phone number, so I'll save Steve a little bit, but six oh nine nine five seven zero seven eight seven. So if anyone's interested in helping for a couple of hours on the twenty-seventh in the morning, uh, we welcome that. Just give me a call. Veterans Day Parade, I know it's, I'm getting, we're still a few months out, but it is gonna be on the twenty-seventh of May, it starts at eleven o'clock. Veterans Day, listen to me.
That would be a little far out.
Oh, you're right. And I did write Veterans Day on here. And then one last thing, you know, I want to give a little shout-out here to Lisa King and the, and the tax office. She's a rock star. Uh, she, we had a collection rate of ninety-eight point four percent, which for a municipality is great. I've sat up here on city council before I sat here and where the collection rate was so low that four weeks, three weeks before the end of the year, all the councilmen are giving the list, you gotta call these people up, you gotta get them to pay taxes, if not, we're in trouble. This tax office did an awesome job and, uh, I commend them. And I think I covered everything, good night.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone have any committee reports?
Madam President, I have a couple.
Yes, Mr. Havocorn.
EDAC met on the twenty-sixth of February, discussed the marketing bids as well as a campaign deal of Summers Point to try to continue to get as many sign-ups there as we can. Uh, they also, EDAC discussed their involvement potentially in the master plan tweak. And then on the twenty-eighth, a meeting was held with the Atlanta County Economic Alliance and Triad to discuss what the next steps would be in building that, uh, relationship. The environmental green team met, topics discussed were sustainable jersey checklist for contractors to assist the city in a sustainability score. The city cleanup day is scheduled for the sixth of April. If you're looking to participate in that and you want to reach out to summerspointgreenteam@gmail.com, that would be helpful. So we know how many folks are gonna be showing up, be it the Public Works Building behind Gregory's Parking Lot, or any thirty, so we get started at nine. The Garden Club met on March the fifth. Uh, they have all their events on the city calendar through June. Strongly recommend you look at some of those, they're pretty interesting. On April twenty-fifth is a bus trip to Brandywine and New Moore's Mansion. As of the fifth, forty-three people were signed up for that. Schools and library, many of you know that the Summers Point School District is facing a one point two million dollar reduction in aid this year. So they're working diligently to try to get that under control. And the Arts Commission will be meeting at the, have a presentation tomorrow at the Senior Center. And I want to thank Jason Frost as well as the Public Works Department for getting that building inside painted. From six to eight, there's gonna be a viewing of artwork on landscape that people painted. So if you get a chance, get over there and just stop in, um, and that'd be great to see a lot of people out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam President? Uh, just to reiterate what, uh, my fellow councilman Charles Havocorn had to say. Tomorrow night, over at the senior building, senior recreation building, there's gonna be an art exhibit and reception starting at six P.M., last until eight P.M. And then I guess moving on with Recreation Board, uh, good things are happening, especially with the, I guess we would call that the senior league field, Sean?
Yes, sir.
It's getting redone, which is good.
At no cost to the city or the government.
Right, right, yep.
Thank you.
Oh, and lastly is the Summers Point Historical Society, they're redoing the front of their building too with landscaping. So, good, good things.
Uh, I'll get the redevelopment committee met in reference to Oak Lane. We met with the developer and their attorney. And they're asking, instead of a full vacation of Oak Lane, they're asking for a partial. The committee's recommendation is that we do grant them the partial, which we'll have to hold tonight's ordinance and introduce a new one if we decide to do that. But several factors, it, it just makes more sense to do the partial so that they have the ability to put an ingress and egress on that part of the road. It was also recommended by the county that, um, that that be done, so. Okay. Anybody, any other reports? We're good? Okay.
Yeah, so with us, with the weather breaking, we're able to get contractors back out on some of the work that was stalled due to the winter weather. So we actually completed paving on Ocean today. So now they'll be moving the final cleanup and punch list work. Uh, on the other side of town, around the, uh, the stormwater work on Exton, we're looking at final paving that, maybe in the area, in that area, um, in the next week or so. I know the weather next week isn't looking as great, so it, it will be weather dependent. Beyond that, there is a change that we need to propose for ordinance number six, which is the, the parking ordinance, it's gonna restrict parking in front of the Summers, Summers Point Maze Landing Road pump station. The county had reviewed the ordinance and came back that they wanted language added to the ordinance that would just basically give them, uh, the chance to vote and sign off on the ordinance as well. So once we approve it, um, it'll go back to them for a, for a final review and sign off. But at this point, they have reviewed it, they're okay with the language, and, uh, they just would like to vote on it as well.
They would have had to do that anyway, since it's a county road. Them adding this language really doesn't change anything, so.
Okay. So we don't have to do any?
We don't have to do anything further, we can vote on it. We can, uh, an application for an amendment just to move the language that they requested. But even if that language wasn't there, they still would have to vote on it.
Right.
It's a county road.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular council meetings, February eighth, twenty twenty-four, and February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, the minutes are approved. Uh, proclamation, Mayor?
Yeah, uh, actually, uh, we, on our Veterans Advisory Board, about to be confused with Memorial Day. We have a vacancy and it's gonna be filled by one of Summers Point's finest, Phil Huber. Uh, and his term is going to end on twelve, let me see, let me see.
Thirty-one, twenty-five.
Twelve thirty-one, twenty-four. And I want to thank Phil for, uh. No, that's for Tom and Seth.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
I didn't realize they were all this.
Put him on the board, he's a good man.
Great, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to ordinances, um, ordinance number two.
Ordinance number two of twenty twenty-four, an ordinance vacating a portion of West Maryland Avenue in the city of Summers Point, County of Atlantic, State of New Jersey.
May I have a motion to open for public comment for ordinance number two?
I'll make that motion, second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number two.
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor, members of council. For the record, Michael Lario from the firm of Niemad Davis and Goldstein on behalf of West Maryland LLC, the developer of this subject property. And this is a request before you tonight to vacate approximately sixty-one hundred square foot portion of West Maryland Avenue. Uh, West Maryland Avenue is an unimproved paper street currently on your tax map. And just to orient the council a little bit as to the site we're talking about, it's block nine one four, lot one. It is immediately behind the existing Weinstein Supply Company. Um, it is the property that's located in a highway commercial one zone, it's a commercially zoned site, and it's currently vacant. Before I get into the, the request before council tonight, I just, there's one housekeeping item. I know that this second reading and adoption was scheduled for, I believe it was, the first meeting in February. When we submitted this request for a vacation, it was with the hopeful idea of having a first reading, the second meeting in January, appearing before the zoning board and coming back to council for second reading and hopefully adoption. That schedule got mixed up and, and we were put before, put in front of councils before we received zoning board approval. We were unaware of that, we obviously weren't there that night, I'd watched the video, I know there was some confusion, members of council, I can tell you that we were also confused. Obviously, the natural progression is to receive zoning board approval and then appear back to council for the vacation. And that, that certainly was our intent, that was our goal, and we're happy and appreciate council hearing us tonight on this requested vacation. Just to give a little bit of history here on this proposed plan of development, we actually were before council way back in October of twenty twenty-two. That was the first thing that we did when we envisioned the development of this site because we specifically envisioned needing this approximately six thousand square foot vacation. So before we went anywhere else, we wanted to go to council. And I think I used that night in front of council that we wanted to bookend this application with trips to council. We wanted to start with you, to be able to talk about what our proposal was, try to gauge your, your acceptance of it before we went down this path. And, and that's really what, what we did. We appeared before council in October of twenty twenty-two. We presented a conceptual plan of development, which you'll see is almost identical to the, the approved plan of development that was approved by the zoning board. And we asked council, would you be open to this? Would you be okay with this? And again, it was an informal question, but we, we asked for a straw vote, and a straw vote was taken, approving this to at least take the next step. And that, that's really all we were looking for, is the ability to take that next step.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Was that anonymous?
Yeah.
Anonymous?
My recollection, my recollection, it was, yeah.
Thank you.
So with that, with that vote of confidence from council, we took the next step. And we applied to the Summers Point TRC, and that's the Technical Review Committee meeting. And what that does, it allows an applicant to appear before the professionals of the board, along with certain board members, to look at a concept plan and try to talk about what are the concerns, what are the questions these professionals have. We sat down and we had a really beneficial meeting in which the orientation of the building was moved based upon the comments we received, additional landscaping was proposed. There were comments about the impact of traffic, a recommendation was made to bring on a traffic engineer, which we did. Again, the project was revised based upon those comments that we received at that TRC meeting in November of twenty twenty-two. Following that TRC meeting, I would just say that the site itself is zoned commercial, highway commercial one, which allows for a variety of commercial uses, restaurants, retail, gas stations, offices, professional offices. Contractors warehouse are not a permitted use within that HC one zone. So we needed use variance relief. What the municipal land use law allows is for you to bifurcate an application for use variance relief. And what that does is allows you to go in for use variance first, get that approved. Once you have the use variance approval, then go back to the board for site plan approval. And it prevents a situation where you're, you're hard engineering site plans before you have use variance approval. So we appeared before the zoning board of adjustment in September of So, we appeared before the zoning board of adjustment in September of 2023 on an application for use variance approval. And we presented that application to the board, and it was unanimously approved, that application for use variance approval. However, there were a number of conditions, and these conditions were really instituted by the board in order to lessen the impact of this proposed development. They include limitations on the hours of operation, the type of materials and substances that could be stored in the building, limitations on the lighting. Again, there's a long list of conditions that were memorialized in, in a written resolution. The next step was to have the site plans hard engineered, and that was, once we got the use variance approval, we hard engineered the site plans, we reapplied to the zoning board for preliminary and final major site plan approval. We appeared before that board in February of this year, we were approved for preliminary and final major site plan approval, but again, there were a number of conditions on that approval relating to the location of the trash enclosure, again, the hours of operation, the lighting, and what the zoning board found, both in its grant of use variance relief and its subsequent grant of preliminary and final major site plan approval, was this is a commercially zoned site that can allow a wide variety of commercial uses. What we are proposing here is far less intensive than many of those uses that are permitted within that highway commercial zone. This contractors warehouse with its limited hours of operation is really particularly suited for this unique site. And I say unique site because it is somewhat tucked behind that Weinstein Supply Company. So, there's only certain types of commercial uses that would really be able to utilize this. And then the zoning board found that this was one of those particularly suitable uses of this site. So, as I said, there was a number of conditions, obviously, the big condition for purposes of council here was the street vacation. That was a, a condition of both the use variance and the site plan approval, that we needed to come back to council, and we knew that, and that's why we, we came to council to begin this process, because we knew we would be coming back before you, and we didn't want that to be the first time that you saw, saw this application. So, turning to the actual vacation itself, I would say the reason for it, first of all, is the lot as it exists right now is somewhat of an irregular shape. It almost looks like a, a pan in the sense that it has a, a small portion that sticks out and then a larger portion, it's irregular. And the reason for that is a portion of West Maryland Avenue was previously vacated and conveyed to a predecessor in interest in, I believe, 1991. Now, we weren't able to pull the reason for that, but that portion of West Maryland Avenue has been vacated and has been conveyed and is now part of this property. So the result is somewhat of an irregularly shaped lot, which from a development standpoint presents an issue as you try to develop this site. I think being able to have this as a full rectangle allows the applicant to relocate certain improvements away from adjacent residential properties, further tucked into the corner, lessen that impact even more. I'd also say that obviously when this, council's looking at this requested vacation, one of the questions you have to ask is, what's the likelihood of this being improved in the future? Obviously, this portion of West Maryland is an unimproved right of way right now, there's no improvements there, it's a paper street. One of the questions is, is there a plan to develop in the future? I'd say this is somewhat unique in that because a portion of West Maryland Avenue has already been vacated, it's actually impossible to link up the two portions of West Maryland Avenue. And when you look at the plan, you'll see what I'm talking about, where it's essentially, you'll never be able to run it through. So, really, there's an undeveloped portion that has no, little to no likelihood of ever being improved with an actual right of way. Again, we feel that this strongly supports the requested vacation in addition to the actual proposed development itself, that this is taking a commercial site, proposing a far less intensive use on this commercial site. It's allowing for a more uniform development of that commercial use, it's been fully approved by your zoning board of adjustment, it's going to add a commercial ratable to a unique lot within the community. I think when you look at all this collectively, it supports the granting of the requested vacation. Now, when we were back before this council in October of 2022, I think one of the questions we received was the existing fence that runs along the shared property line between the city-owned property and our property, and what could be done with that fence? Now, with me I have Faith Midgarden from Highland Design, they were the professionals used as part of the applications to the zoning board and the applications to DEP. And Faith, if you can, you talk a little bit, just to orient the council where we're talking about and where that fence is.
Sure, so the fence runs along, I'm not sure that exactly shows here. So it runs along the bottom of the property, the edge of the, so it's running through here.
And it's right in the middle of, so the state has a ranking system for wetland buffers, it's zero through five, five being most critical. The state, through the application process for Mr. Edwards, has deemed this is a combination of four and five, which means it's of the most critical habitat, which would mean the fence is running right through the middle of the wetland buffer. So, I know that there was discussions about replacing the fence in kind, replacing it with other materials. If it were to be replaced with anything other than in kind replacement of the existing materials that are there or similar, it is highly advised that we review that with the DEP, because this is such a highly environmentally sensitive buffer area.
Excuse me. Um, hello? Hello? Could you turn that around so the general public could see it also? I'd like them to understand what's going on here.
So essentially, underneath of this dark line, which is a property bound, there is a fence, a chain-like metal fence, that protects...
Yeah, it runs the length of the upper basement limit of the pond there, and it runs the full length of this property, and it runs around and all the way, I believe here it's important it has stops, but it does run the trail of the whole way to the field.
And that fence is in need of repair.
The fence essentially keeps anybody who walks around going into the pond, and that is in major disrepair, with holes in it, multiple holes underneath of it, and I've been back there myself as the owner, and would you find young kids down there that maybe shouldn't have been, since they're not being looked after or anything like that?
So, the point of all this is obviously, we've heard the concern of council is to need to replace the fence, and we're, we're happy to oblige, there's some difficulty with getting DEP approval as part of it, but we're happy to lead the charge, get DEP to try to get it approved, if the city wants to lead the charge to get this fence approved and make the applicant responsible financially for the replacement, we're okay with that. We're just trying to be flexible here with the way to get this replacement.
So the purpose is up tonight that we're just talking about the vacation, not, not the fence?
One of the conditions of the zoning board approval is to have this discussion with council, and the only reason is...
Does question or actually replace the fence?
So, I think it was to the discretion of council, really whatever council would like to do by way of fence replacement.
So that's actually not something before us tonight?
No.
Shut me down on that, but that's really not before us, I think that we're doing a vacation, that's something that was published, and Johnny, some lady, I missed the, the October meeting, it was a crap over here for me, and I'm just calling on the air from this, it's on the meeting, but I'm just gonna suggest that we revisit that.
Okay, certainly, we can make a subsequent request to council for that replacement. It's a condition of that zoning board approval, so we won't, we have to make this request and at least get council's input as to how you would like that, that fence issued address. Just, just real quickly, just so everyone on council is aware of what we're talking about, really, this portion of West Maryland Avenue is what we're proposing and requesting to be vacated, and this was the portions I mentioned that has already been previously vacated. So West Maryland Avenue has actually proved right of way there, the property line starts, this was previously vacated, and it's now part of the option's property, and this is the paper street portion of West Maryland Avenue, 6,100 square feet that we are seeking to be vacated now, in order to again, give it a more uniformity. And I would just say, being able to push the building over to the left-hand side, to talk in there, to add the additional landscaping along the funds there, these are all things that have a more uniform lot, allowing the, allowing the developer to do. That's essentially the request before council tonight, and again, we have our professionals here, if there's any questions, if there's any questions about the process itself, we're happy to answer, but again, this, this has been, it's been a long process, but I think it's been done the right way. By that, I mean, we've used the resources that the city makes available to try to develop this in a way that really went hand in hand with the city and its professionals. By that, I mean, informal meetings with council, informal meetings with the board professionals. This product really reflects that info that we received from those, those members of the city in coming to this final presentation. So again, I thank you again for your consideration, if there's any additional questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Madam President, just a point of order of Mr. Smith, this ordinance was tabled. So, if you're, wouldn't have to come off the table, yeah. Thank you.
Want to do that real quick? Okay, should I have a motion to, uh, put ordinance number two back on the agenda?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
Just one of the issues, just so, one of the other problems, it was a complication issue also.
Right, that's why.
If everything could have gone wrong on this, getting this in front of this body, we tried to help.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, John Helbig, chairman of our Summers Point Environmental Commission. I'm here this evening just to comment on this street vacation for West Maryland Avenue, and to talk about an issue that I learned about recently.
I'm gonna ask Madam President, let me interrupt, Mr. Helbig, Mr. Helbig, is your here, the chairman?
Chairman of the Environmental Commission.
Did they send you an email today? The Environmental Commission, did they take a vote, because there is some...
Oh, we discussed it extensively, yeah.
Discussed it?
Yes, yes.
And they sent you here?
Yes.
Okay, and where are the minutes for that? We don't have them.
No.
We, we also, you've also put yourself down as the Green Team also under a, correct?
Yes.
And, and was there a vote on that? You appear here.
Well, it's the same group.
Same group, so, so it's the same body, and we don't have any minutes, you have no notification or authorization, but you're on behalf of that body.
Well, the Environmental Commission's charged with reporting to council.
That, that's, that's separate and distinct, and you sent me an email today, and I really wish you'd walk me out, because I don't like, I'm very, very... I got up last time, and I heard some complaints about your appearance, but you were on the zoning board currently, correct?
Yes, I am.
And you voted on this issue, because you're not...
I voted affirmatively for the use variance, I voted against the site plan.
Okay, so you voted against it, and at that point, did you comment during this?
No, I, I provided my reasons for voting no.
And, and your reasons for voting no are very part and parcel of what we're going to talk about.
To some degree.
I, I believe you're placing yourself in a conflict of interest, John, and I don't need to make me clear of that, and I'm just gonna tell you that, because you can be removed from your position for, for being in a conflict, and, and unfortunately, I just recently had to address someone else, and I'm not, I'm not real happy about this, these type of things are not spontaneous, and you know about it, I'm the city attorney, okay, don't call, and we have a very good relationship, and I'm a little embarrassed about having to do this, and I'm gonna, my recommendation is that you don't proceed, you proceed, you proceed at your own risk, John.
Well, I am gonna proceed.
Okay, I knew you would.
Listen, they don't care, it's not gonna change anything, you've worked very hard for this city, and you're on here, your time for...
Okay.
A water?
Yeah. Motion to close, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment on ordinance number two. Could I have a motion to adopt? Ordinance number two?
I'll make that motion, second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Again, I'm very abstained, because I wasn't part of the straw vote that occurred, and I haven't been part of this process until recently, so I am gonna abstain from voting.
Thank you. Okay, ordinance number two is adopted. Ordinance number three?
Ordinance number three of 2024, calendar year 2024, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 40A, colon, four dash forty-five point one four.
May I have a motion to open for public comment on ordinance number three, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number three. Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment on ordinance number three. Could I have a motion to adopt ordinance number three?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number three is adopted, I mean, ordinance number three. Ordinance number four?
Ordinance number four of 2024, an ordinance vacating Oak Lane in the city of Summers Point, county of Atlantic, state of New Jersey.
May I have a motion to open for public comment on ordinance number four, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number four.
Good evening again, for the record, Michael Lario from the firm of Niemad Davis and Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant R2F2 Incorporated. This is a vacation, and my partner Keith Davis, before council at the last meeting, requesting a meeting with the redevelopment subcommittee on the proposed vacation of Oak Lane. The request at that time was to meet with the redevelopment subcommittee to talk about tabling that ordinance and instead introducing a partial vacation and a partial dedication of Oak Lane. And the reason for this is, Oak Lane is a paper street, an unimproved paper street that runs partially parallel to Summers Point Maze Landing Road, and there's a perpendicular portion. Really, that perpendicular portion is what is at issue now. If a total vacation, which is what's before the council tonight, is granted, what would happen is that 60-foot right of way would be split down the middle. 30 feet would be conveyed to R2F2 Incorporated, 30 feet would be incorporated, would be conveyed to the adjacent property. The plan of development that was presented to the planning board, and again, this, this concerns residential development of Great Bay, it's approximately 168 units, 42 affordable housing units. That envisioned an ingress and egress point along Maze Landing and Summers Point, excuse me, Summers Point Maze Landing Road, allowing for cars obviously to get into the development and out of the development. That envisioned ultimately a dedication, dedicating that portion of the road as a public road, not, not a private road. What would happen if it is vacated and only 30 feet is provided to the developer, what that does is it limits the ability to construct an ingress and egress point. What happens is only an egress point could be constructed, so instead of allowing cars to go in and out, it only allows cars to go out. We feel that that's not a strong plan...
Yeah, it wasn't it?
I'm sorry?
I think it's out.
No, it was an exit.
Yeah, it was an exit.
An exit, yeah.
We feel that that's not a superior plan of development, that ultimately allowing the ingress and egress point here is a better plan, for circulation purposes, it just works better. This plan was obviously approved with the ingress and egress by your planning board, it also was presented to Atlantic County, Atlantic County equally has requested, recommended that this be an ingress and egress. So, what we're requesting tonight from council is to table the ordinance before you to vacate the entire portion, and instead introduce an ordinance vacating a portion of Oak Lane, but then dedicating that small perpendicular portion that we're talking about now, allowing it to be con... it to become a public street. Now, with that being said, obviously, it is not the developer's expectation that Summers Point is going to be responsible for maintaining that. The developer is willing to enter into a maintenance agreement with the city, so paving, snow removal, potholes, all types of maintenance and upkeep will be the responsibility of the owner, and that obligation will run with the land. So a homeowner's association?
I get good at this. I find a case for your grandsons.
Moral.
1989. You're constructing the roadway, so.
Correct. Yes, yes.
Let's just put that point out.
Yes. So we will construct it, we will maintain it, those obligations will run with the land. In addition, we'll enter into a hold harmless and indemnification agreement with the city. So if there's any litigation involving this section at any point in the future, we will indemnify and hold harmless the city. Again, we feel that by doing that, really, it just allows for a better plan, a safer plan, better circulation. So again, we're making that request that the ordinance before you be tabled, new ordinance be introduced and considered by this council.
Because of how council proceeds, there's already going to be an indemnification agreement because I've sent everyone some of the documents earlier that this is a sort of a fellow.
Everybody has a copy of it in their.
There's a stem that goes into Great Bay's property, and then there's a portion of the roadway that runs parallel to Maze Landing. Parallel, the Great Bay has represented that they would be purchasing the first lot next to the stem. The indemnification agreement really at this point goes to the other two, just to ensure that in fact the litigation, the certification, they're getting 100% of that roadway as opposed to 50%, and then there's one more that gets 50%. So to protect the city from a lawsuit, that's also part of the indemnification.
Correct, yes. Correct, yes.
Excuse me?
Is that done with the, with the, has those two property owners agreed to that?
No, that's why we get an indemnification on that. That way, if there's a lawsuit about it, then they are going to defend us of that lawsuit that they're putting that bill. If it's free soil and there happens to be an accountant's office, they're in a building.
Sure, sure. So if we're vacating that portion of it to a single owner, a single side of it, take the stem portion and just vacate that to the single side.
There was a difference, and this was based upon the engineer for the applicant as well as our engineer, to review the documents. This paper street was created out of Great Bay's property as opposed to a situation where a right-of-way would be created out of, on the way of flat, we've got the property owners on either side, and yet this was not created in that fashion. In fact, the roadway was never really created, it was just established as a paper street there. But there was, there were meetings and discussions on this issue.
Can I jump in, Mr. Smith? Because I think that's a great question as to why, why is that vacation, all of it go to the one property owner where the other one's split down the middle? And the reason is, reviewing the records, Great Bay owned all the property up to Summers Point Maze Landing Road at one point. At some point, we think approximately in the 1950s, they dedicated the lots along Summers Point Maze Landing Road and that proposed right-of-way, that unimproved section of Oak Lane that we're talking about now. There's provisions in the law that state if a dedication is made to a municipality and is never formally accepted and it's later vacated, it's as if it never happened. The entirety of that portion reverts back to the original owner. So what we've been able to trace is that portion, that parallel portion of Oak Lane, because it was never formally accepted and improved by the municipality, once council votes to vacate that, it actually in its entirety reverts back to Great Bay. Now, that perpendicular portion, that stub, that does not apply there. And that's why if that's vacated, it actually splits 30/30.
Madam President? We're here to talk about not, we're here to table the ordinance that's in front of us, correct?
That's in front of us is for a full vacation.
Right. But that's what our discussion is tonight.
Right.
Everything else would have to come back to us in some type of new ordinance, correct?
Well.
This presentation that's ongoing at this time is in support of their position that this council tabled that, reconsidered, and the basis of tabling it is, look, this is why.
Right.
There was a meeting Monday?
Yes, I think.
Yeah, it was a meeting. But Mr. Davis with the committee on this.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, so right now, all this is, is if there's no motion to table this, then the motion is to vacate.
Correct. I make a motion to table and reintroduce.
Well, it's a second reading. That's fine, that's fine. Because once you get a second on that, it's.
We're not going to be able to ask any more questions.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But just for tonight, we'll be back.
Public comment, should we?
Right.
We're still open for public comment, so should we wait till we get through this and then address the proposals here?
We should, my thing, I think we should wait until public comment is completed, and then we proceed with any type of action we want to take.
With the appropriate action, okay, to table it, or if you don't want this to vote no and then have them come back, you can do either of the four. Well, if you table it, then it can be brought back up again.
Well, if you table it, you can also introduce a separate ordinance that dies on its own.
Either way, a separate ordinance needs to be introduced.
If.
If council decides to do that.
Right.
I'm going to play poker with you.
Okay, I got it.
Okay.
All right. So does anyone else have any other questions?
Yes. So, why, if you, you being the developer, has purchased or have the four block development lot under agreement, and you're going to utilize that for what has been added to the project of late additional overflow parking there? Why not just shift the, that, all that development, the overflow parking in the street or the driveway?
West.
West, not needing, if we do the full vacation, you get half of it, giving you that, and relocate that drainage pit?
Our engineers have looked at it about trying to slide it over and expand it, given the existing parking lot there and the onsite drainage, trying to relocate that. Our engineers indicating to us that it's just, it's simply from a feasibility standpoint, not something that they can accomplish right now. They're looking at this as the better option is without substantially having to revise these plans. And that's, one of the issues is these plans were approved conditioned upon this partial vacation dedication. We understand that we would potentially have to go back in front of the planning board, but ultimately, when you start moving these access points and moving the corresponding parking and the stormwater management improvements, you have to relocate them in a way that the plan revisions, they become very large. We feel that this is a way to accomplish this without having to redesign that portion of the site.
That the plan, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, also, it was brought up at the meeting that there's a utility pole that would have to be moved, and the estimated cost on that was somewhere around $50,000?
Approximately.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was added to the conversation.
And again, that's obviously more of a developer issue, but.
Sure. So, I lost my train as well.
It'll come back to you.
So that, so not shifting that, or, excuse me, you said this was, that this was approved based on a partial vacation? Is that correct? Is that correct by the planning board?
So the plan that was proposed had a partial vacation and a partial dedication here, that had the two-lane access, it really would only work by way of having that partially dedicated and partially dedicated, but it was conditioned upon that. That obviously, if we weren't able to obtain that partial vacation and dedication, we'd have to go back.
But at that time, early on in last year or whatnot, was it not agreed upon that we were going to go ahead with the full vacation?
I know there's been a lot of discussion on this. I think the position has been that portion, the parallel portion of Oak Lane would be fully vacated, but I think the stub here, this portion that's perpendicular, would be dedicated. That's my understanding, that's always been the vision.
I don't know that that was ever the case, but I'm not, I can't debate you, I don't have that. The other thing, and I've only heard this secondhand, is that the adjacent property owner wants a full vacation so he can have that piece of property. Is that correct? Or, you know, I told him, I don't know.
I was going to say, I can't speak to the adjacent property owner. I know that we've made repeated attempts to try to negotiate with him, and he has not responded to our attempts.
Okay.
My wife's a little aggressive. She's my allergy to me. I was under the impression. Yeah, Richard A. Carf, I'm the property owner. Frank Rocco, nice man, he made one attempt. I'm not interested in, he wanted to buy my house for nothing. We're not interested in selling it. Anyway, we like your community. I've been here involved with this community for over 40 years. I own a strip center, and I have the house, and I love the house, and I'm going to keep it the way it is. I put a beautiful environmental thing, removed the tank, and it's a wonderful house. I was under the impression, talking to the engineer I've been in touch with for at least a year, that the law states in New Jersey, and he only made one attempt, Rocco, and I thought we were going to be friends. I want the trees there, I want to keep it the way it is for the environment. I want half the road. I'm not interested in selling it. And that's my, and the law states in New Jersey, if you're going to vacate, that I've been entitled to half the road, and that's what I think we should stick to. We have a responsibility to abide by the laws that are in New Jersey. Now, would you like to say something?
We're not clear on exactly where it would butts, but we have a house there, and from what we did a survey, we think the road would be like encroaching upon the house, with very little side yard. And we were happy to hear that you were vacating it 50/50, even though it would only do the one-way traffic. So, you know, since we've had that property for many, many years, we like the house, we just hope it goes 50/50.
We hope you do the right thing for the environment, we're going to keep the trees there.
Can I just say something? There's going to be a roadway constructed, so they understand that what they're asking for. So they're asking for the full 60 feet as opposed to giving you 30 additional and then getting them.
We have been taking care of the property up until now, we've cleared it.
The law states when you vacate a road from what I understood, I told my lawyers too, that half the road would be mine. We're going to leave it for the perils and the environment. Let him do his road according to your laws, the distance that it should be properly on my house. So there's really nothing to talk about. The law's been in New Jersey for years, the statute, so we've got to go by local law states. You don't give this developer free ride. You have to use your common sense. Just because he put in the law and ran the road and deals, let him do the road the way he has to do it, and keep it according to the laws away from my house. Thank you for listening, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion to close the public portion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment.
Is that something, just so everyone's aware? There was a litigation relative to public, and removal of deed restriction for a portion of this, so that we, it's went to court. There was a trial on this, you may recall, neighbors out of the rural fairway section, and a lot of them objected to this. But it resulted in an agreement between the city of Summers Point and the then owners of the Great Bay. And on page eight, paragraph 3.15, I'll just read it, corporation had for vacation of Oak Lane, and the parties agree that the utilization of the project shall require improvement in use of paper public street known as Oak Lane, or alternatively, relocation, improvement in use of Oak Lane, or alternatively, the city's vacation of Oak Lane for a portion thereof. So that's really where we're at on this, is that we've already agreed to something with this roadway.
So it, we would have to either vacate it or pave it ourselves?
No, we can do a partial vacation.
Right, right.
Do what we.
Which we're talking about.
Before, I'm just explaining this, where this came from.
Right.
This isn't something like this council decided, well, hey, let's, we inherit that which occurred in 2008.
Okay.
So, Mr. Smith, if a partial vacation is undertaken and we, this street is built by the developer, right, that's an improvement on an existing street?
Correct.
Correct?
Existing paper street.
Right. So it, does it require additional improvement, approvals?
Additional.
Well, we're creating, we're creating a street now that is now outside this project, right? And I feel stupid asking this, does that have to go to a planning board or whatever it does?
So that the approved plans actually have it with the two lanes? So the planning board has approved it as designed with the two lanes? Right.
Right, but that's a street as opposed to part of this project. And in essence, the city is now creating a street that the developer's going to build.
And I think that's wherein lies there the agreement that they maintain it in perpetuity. So even though it's designed and being improved, improved as it was approved, the only question becomes who ultimately takes ownership? And while we were owning, the agreement is that they would maintain it in perpetuity. So there's no, basically no financial burden.
Right, sure, I understand it, but during the construction of it, is there an approval process for that? Or since we're, it's just our street and we're the government and we can do what we want?
Well, yeah, well, like I said, I believe it was approved in its current configuration and construction method, and that's not changing. The only thing that's changing is the ultimate ownership, and I don't think it needs a separate approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
You need a second for that motion to table.
Okay. We need a second.
I'll second it. I just think it's important to maintain. No, nope.
That's all.
Okay. Once it's tabled, there's no more discussion.
You need that motion.
All right, good. And I second it, so now we just go directly to a vote.
Do it now?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Are we allowed to comment on our vote before we make our vote? Thank you.
No.
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 This is for tableing only.
Okay. The motion is to table the ordinance as it's written tonight, so. We'll do it.
Councilmember Havercorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember DePampelis?
Yes.
Councilmember McCary?
Yes.
Councilmember McGee?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember McWigan?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Dill?
Yes.
Council President Johnston?
Yes. Okay. Ordinance number four is tabled. Thank you. Thank you.
We got the planning and planning stuff done.
Okay. Ordinance number five, please.
Ordinance number five of 2024. An ordinance enacted under authority of NJSA 39:4-197, regulating the parking of vehicles on certain streets and portions thereof, amending and supplementing the Summers Point Municipal Code, Chapter 250, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 1, Section 250-24.1, Schedule 1A, and repealing all ordinances heretofore adopted, the provisions of which are inconsistent herewith, specifically the municipal sanitary sewer pump station on Woodlat Court.
May I have a motion to open for public comment, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number five.
Motion to close the public portion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Could I have a motion to adopt ordinance number five?
So moved. Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number five. Any opposed? Ordinance number five is adopted. Ordinance number six.
Ordinance number six of 2024. An ordinance enacted under authority of NJSA 39:4-197, regulating the parking of vehicles on certain streets and portions thereof, amending and supplementing the Summers Point Municipal Code, Chapter 250, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 1, Section 250-24.1, Schedule 1A, and repealing all ordinances heretofore adopted, the provisions of which are inconsistent herewith, specifically the municipal sanitary sewer pump station on Summers Point Maze Landing Road.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
To open for public comment. Sorry, I got a little lost.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number six. Motion to close?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Could I have a motion to adopt ordinance number six?
Do we have to do such amendment?
Oh, we do? I thought you said we didn't have to do it.
We have to make an application to amend it.
Oh, okay.
That's just, we're actually going to include this day, you have language there?
I have language in front of me.
Thank you.
Do you want me to read it?
Or just, yes, everybody, you're talking about.
So, under the section, whereas Summers Point Maze Landing Road is a county road, county route 559, we're adding the language, whereas the consent of Board of Commissioners in the form of an ordinance of said board is required in order for the ordinance of the city of Summers Point to become effective. And then, at the end of the ordinance, we are adding a section six, which reads, "Upon final passage of this ordinance, the clerk of the city of Summers Point shall send a certified copy to the clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Atlantic County with a request for the board's consent." And then, in section seven, we're adding the language that the ordinance shall only take effect upon its final passage, publication, and adoption in a manner prescribed by law. And then, the addition is, "And upon the final passage, publication, and adoption of the consenting ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Atlantic County." So again, it's basically just stating the fact that they have the ultimate say because it's their road, they wanna see our ordinance and then sign off on it.
Okay.
Thanks. I'll make a motion to amend it in accordance with what the engineers just stated. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we need a motion to adopt ordinance number six as amended.
I'll make a motion as amended. I'll second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number six is adopted. Ordinance number seven.
Ordinance number seven of 2024. An ordinance enacted under authority of NJSA 39:4-197, NJSA 39:4-197.6, and NJSA 39:4-197.7, granting the city the authority to establish a restricted parking zone in front of a residence for a fee, amending and supplementing Section 250-57I-1 of the Summers Point City Code, repealing all ordinances heretofore adopted, the provisions of which are inconsistent herewith.
May I have a motion to open for public comment on ordinance number seven, please?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number seven. Have a motion to close.
Motion to close public portion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Could I have a motion to adopt ordinance number seven?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments?
No.
Just to simplify this, all the dealing is gonna be waiving permit fees.
Right. For veterans, for disabled veterans.
Disabled veterans, because they're the only people who can.
But the code mentions the Four Sisters parking lots. You don't need to be, if I'm a veteran and I live in those houses, do I get the fee waived?
They're not handicapped, Scott.
And I'm not a disabled veteran.
They're not handicapped.
I know they're not handicapped sections, but they're mentioned in that. That's why I'm saying, is it a veteran or a disabled veteran?
It's for veterans particularly, comply in fact that they have a handicap sign already. In other words, if you get a handicap sign out in front of your houses, there used to be one down on New Jersey Avenue, about five houses up, anybody who was handicapped could have pulled in that spot. So actually, we had, broke out a subsection, and there's about five sections of that, that's Article 5 of Chapter 250. And in that subsection, we then say there's an imposition of a permit fee, now you've got exclusive break to that. That's how, that was the creation of the ordinance after the original ordinance. So that's, so the only people who can technically park there are disabled vets, because they're the people who have the handicap spot of their house.
So we're only waiving the fee for handicap parking, not for permit parking?
Correct.
No. There's no, there is no fee for handicap parking, because they are now getting a permit which restricts that handicap parking spot to them. So they get issued a permit that allows them to be the only person that can park in that handicap spot.
So it is the permit that they're not paying for now?
Yeah. Personally, this, I've had to wrap a little bit, go over this a few times, but I've now got this committed to the members now.
Okay, so we have permit parking on Gibbs and Higbee, we're not waiving those fees.
Right. Unless they're handicapped. If they're a veteran or not.
See, but it's not, it's not written in the code that way.
They need the handicap sign first.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number seven is adopted. Ordinance number eight.
Ordinance number eight of 2024. An ordinance amending Chapter 169, littering and property maintenance, Article 1, general provisions of the Code of the City of Summers Point, and repealing all ordinances heretofore adopted, the provisions of which are inconsistent herewith.
May I have a motion to introduce ordinance number eight, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments?
Just a quick one, just by way of housekeeping. These are just general housekeeping ordinances that are now being required by the NJDEP. So it's just to come into conformance with the DEP. Then that goes for nine as well.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number eight, this is the first reading, introduced. Ordinance number nine.
Ordinance number nine of 2024. An ordinance repealing Sections 114-182, Stormwater Control, and 114-183, Stormwater Management Systems, and of Article 24, Design and Improvement Standards, and Sections 114-210 through 114-220 of Article 29, Stormwater and Title Stormwater Control, of Chapter 114, Development Regulations, and enacting new Sections 114-210 through 114-220 of Article 29, Stormwater and Title Stormwater Control, of Chapter 114, Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Summers Point.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number nine is introduced. I have a motion to open for public comment on resolutions only.
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on resolutions only. Patricia Pearson, 587 Marks Road. What is Oprah? O-P-R-A? Open Public Records Act. Okay. So, what does the bill, what's the bill about that you're supporting? Reducing some of the, well...
Placing certain restrictions on the perceived abuse of that, such as commercial use of vendors or, of, those related to the...
So people are...
Requesting all the property record cards of your assessor, and especially if they have documents of someone's selfless information, trying to give it that, so trying to make it so that if you have a dispute, relative to whether or not, say, private record versus a public record, that attorney's fees right now are automatically given even if the judge says, well, you know, this is a close call that I'm going over here, you're ending up paying some attorney's fees. And, but as developed, it's an actual specialty field, people watch certain cases, they come out of litigation in the Supreme Court, and the next day, they file a note request for evidence, got 10 days to respond, known as you've seen the new decision, and the Supreme Court, they've expanded it, and so you didn't respond, and they file a claim against you in the open paper, attorney's fees on it. That, that, there is...
Abuse, okay, I got that one. Thank you, though. Who's got the bid for the pumping stations?
There's two separate contractors.
Do you know their names?
Yeah, one is Wyndham, the other one leads to Arthur Henry, but...
Arthur Henry Construction, yes, Force Station 5, Force Main.
Okay. Okay. New York Avenue School, is that, you're gonna go into executive session for that, or are you doing it now? Executive session. All right. One thing for public comment for me is, I've heard that the people who donated that school, it has to remain a school, or it goes back to the original family. That's correct, has to be education, yes.
This is an executive session, and all we're going to do is have a discussion about certain issues. We're not making any representations of anything.
Awarding the bid for leasing Marina, and leasing Higbee Avenue Pier. What's the story on both of them?
It's gonna be the respondent that's been there for the last few years, that do, in the top honor.
So you're just renewing the lease on both?
Well, we knew, we went back up a bit for both, and both were refunded.
Were they, did they own the teakie boats too, or any of that?
Yes, top honor, yeah.
The whole thing? Okay. And the financial donation from Shore Memorial, is that the bed charge, or they gave us a separate gift? That was given to the fire, oh, behind.
No, they gave a separate gift in November, the police department specifically, a separate one.
So Shore Memorial gave the police department a donation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And also, oh, I'll do a public session, okay, thank you. Thank you. Motion to close?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment on resolutions. Resolution number 78.
Resolution number 78 of 2024. Taxes canceled and refunded, Lot 318, Lot 8.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 78 is adopted. Number 81.
Resolution number 81 of 2024. Support of New Jersey Senate Bill S-2930, and New Jersey Assembly Bill A-4045, Oprah Reform.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments? Any comments?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Just as a way of an update, this bill, it has come out of committee, and is being considered by the upper patients committee now.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 81 is adopted. Number 82.
Resolution number 82 of 2024. Awarding bid for the pump station number five, Force Main Replacement, Contract Number 17.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 82 is adopted. Resolution number 83.
Resolution number 83 of 2024. Awarding bid with pump station number three, Force Main Replacement, Contract Number 13, Rebid.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 83 is adopted. Number 84.
Resolution number 84 of 2024. Appointment of Performance Marketing and Signage.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 84 is adopted. Number 85.
Resolution number 85 of 2024. Approving Proposals, Goods, and Services, 2024.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 85 is adopted. Number 86.
Resolution number 86 of 2024. Resolution acknowledging memorandum of understanding with the city of Pleasantville, and accepting fire equipment through the assistance of firefighters grant AFG program.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 86 is adopted. Number 87.
Resolution number 87 of 2024. Authorizing executive session, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation in which the public body is or may become a party, any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as a lawyer. Advice of counsel and attorney-client privileged communication regarding the potential lease of New Jersey Avenue School by the city of Summers Point from the Summers Point Board of Education.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 87 is adopted. We'll be going into executive session at the end of the meeting, and I don't believe we'll be taking any action when we come out of that. Resolution number 88, please.
Resolution number 88 of 2024. Awarding bid and authorizing lease for Marina operations.
May I have a motion, please? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 88 is adopted. Number 89.
Resolution number 89 of 2024. Authorizing lease agreement for Higbee Avenue Pier.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 89 is adopted. Could I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is adopted. Does anyone have any old business to discuss?
Hearing none.
Does anyone have any new business to discuss?
We need approval for a social affair permit application for the American Legion, Post 352, for an event July 21st, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Just for the record, I will be recusing myself from any of this discussion, because this is my nonprofit that this event is for, so.
I will, because I'm also part of the Lawson's group, so.
Yeah, I will recuse myself also.
Is everybody else okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Also need approval for an extension of premises application for the Anchorage on 4/27/2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This is during vac.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Discussion of the bills.
Discussion of the bills, Mr. Frost.
Yeah, this evening, we have a bill, a new amount of $448, $134, and a $80.
May I have a motion to open for public comment?
Same move.
Same move.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Gary Papacheck. Thank you, Mayor, and Council, and other officials. I just wanted to point it out, a public safety issue at Groveland Avenue and Maryland Avenue, at the bike path, there is no sidewalks to get from the Atlantic Avenue across the bike path on a sidewalk properly without going into the street.
Groveland and Maryland?
Maryland has one sidewalk that goes all the way through, but it's missing the other side. Groveland doesn't have any that go on both sides to cross Atlantic. I just wanted to point that out for you folks, it's a safety concern. A lot of elderly and.
Is he spare? Yeah. Yes, Ed O'Donnell. And the world is at its lowest point ever. Just look at the coverage of Haiti. Take a look at Haiti. Take a look at Philadelphia, where I spend a lot of time. But the main solution, and this is good at Easter, is everybody treat everybody with love, kindness, friendliness, respect, old-fashioned manners, you get the message. This will change a lot. Three of the recent bus murders in Philadelphia, and on Bus 23, two of them, because I ride that bus to Chestnut Hill, Germantown, when I speak to the Quaker churches there, and I've sensed for years, there was just so much rudeness on that bus. I sensed there was gonna be a lot of violence. You could see it. So just this one issue of friendliness can turn around a lot of things in the world. And then my parents' favorite newscaster was Lowell Thomas, he said, there's good news tonight. So the three, three bits of good news, there's a rosary event in Kennedy Park Saturday, 12 to 1, very sincere group of people. There is free ice cream, and you'll learn how to make ice cream at the library, Saturday at 2, and former Delaware Governor Castle, and thousands of other people have all named me the number one freeloader in the history of the world. So I know what I'm talking about. These are very, very good events. And then the, a last thing, oh yeah, Saturday, Sunday, St. Patrick's Day, St. Joseph's, after the 10 mass, or 10:30 check-in, free refreshments in the basement. Now Sean has helped a lot of people, he does a lot of good work, and he is the official biographer of St. Patrick. But he needs to tell people that St. Patrick never drank anything stronger than fruit juice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get more details on the rosary event? Uh, no, just, it's 12 to 1. They didn't, they didn't say any issues were at the center of it. Uh, that's all. I could bring a friend named Tom Smith with me if I can turn that.
Were you on the ballot?
Uh, I am third-party candidate for president. I did not go to New Hampshire this year, like Nikki Haley, I got smart and saved the $1,000 filing fee, but I am a write-in candidate. So June 4th, write-in in the Jersey primary, that's free, you don't have to spend the $1,000. And November 5th, but I am getting more and more publicity. I've been on C-SPAN about 80 times, the call-in show, which goes nationwide, and EWTN, five times, goes nationwide, so I feel good that I'm getting a good message out. Thank you. Thank you.
That's Ed O'Donnell spelled with two N's, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
An apostrophe? Google Ed O'Donnell candidate to President United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Pearson, 587 Marks Road. I wanted to mention PJ Leary in this, in this room at this time. He passed away, he was a local, he lived here a long time, he stood up here many, many times, and I just wanted to put it in the record that, to remember his memory, he was in the construction, he had two lovely houses on Shore Road near Charlie's, and he was a good guy for the town, so that's that one. And also, Michael Owen said about the art exhibit tomorrow at the senior citizens at 6 o'clock, the last one was very successful, and I think if you can support it, it would be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Could I have, um, we're now closed for public comment.
Could I have a motion to pay the bills, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.